For the Brookings County Commission for Tuesday, February 7th, 2023. Please rise for the pledge. Next on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during the agenda time must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during the agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting. And we have one person signed in, Jeanette Gibbons. Forward.
Good morning, commissioners. A little bit early after I talk to go down and talk to Bonnie Foster, our city clerk. And my continuing concern is elections. And we have a lot of good people out in here right now that are fighting for all of us. But I really wonder how much can we get done right here with the good people that we have right here, serving on our commissioners? So some of my concerns with our elections, voting centers, I think, need to go away. And we need to go back to our precincts where we vote with our neighbors and we, as neighbors, step up to the plate and do our job to monitor those elections and handle those. Voting centers have not come through with making our elections. Well, I don't know if they made it more available, easier, sort of, but right in my own neighborhood with a precinct is pretty easy, too, I think. So I haven't seen the dramatic increase in voters because we have voting centers. So I think that kind of negates that argument. I'm concerned about our voter roles. And I understand there's some kind of watered-down bills out in here. And then there's ones where we're trying to get some teeth into that subject. You know, I see a lot of heel dragging, pushback out in here, just with what little I'm monitoring out there. I did spend a day out there myself. But I don't understand the resistance to voting and cleaning it up. So voter roles, the precinct voting, post-election audits. We must. I cannot believe we trust machines to do a job without checking them. Really? And it's not like we have our heads buried in the sand. We've been living with this now for over two years with a lot of information coming from a lot of places. And I started by listening to the hearings that were held in the states where they contested the elections vehemently because they had the goods on them. They knew the elections were fraudulent. Drop boxes, the Dominion machines changing the percentages of votes going to the candidates. There's tons of evidence. We just can't ignore it. So why aren't we cleaning it up? And why can't we do as much as we can right here at the local level? So that would be my request of you. We are all on the same team. And I pulled up just a short note from one of my friends on Facebook. And this is something she wrote back in June. But for all of us who are alive today, what an incredible time to be alive, to not only witness this great awakening, but experiencing it, each of us in our own way. I am certain we will see many more extraordinary things going forward, some things that we never thought could exist. But is here, now, or in the future? I think we all need to prepare ourselves in all aspects of our lives to embrace the golden era that is unfolding for humanity. Because it is ultimately up to all of us to live in peace and harmony with all of humanity and creation. I trust that we have all learned from our mistakes and that going forward, we will truly live with one another, just as God's source energy intended from the very beginning, whenever the beginning really was. And this is my friend Octavia, a very dear, close friend of mine who I've never met, who lives in South Africa. One of the greatest things for me these past two years plus are the people that I've connected with around the world, Northern Ireland, South Africa, Canada, all across the United States, people I've never met, and yet I feel closer to them than some people I've known my entire life and lived with here. We are all connected. And I thank you for your attention. I thank you for your help. And let's go team.
All right, thanks, Jeanette. All right. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Thank you.
Any changes or anything? There, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Approval of minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, approval of the human services report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Posler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number six, routine business, approval of claims. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
There's a second. Okay, discussion on the claims. Changes or additions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Posler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Department head reports. Jen is here for community health.
Like you said, my name is Jen Burns. I'm one of the nurses at the community health office here in Brookings. Just doing our twice-a-year little update with you guys. If you ever have any questions throughout the year, feel free to reach out. And I think I've missed a couple of visits from, I think Kelly's stopped by a couple of times. So we're always kind of out and about doing things. Still doing great. Our office continues to be fully staffed. We have one county clerical, our state dietitian, and then two nurses, myself, and then Kim Kinner, the other nurse. She's an LPN. She's been there a year. So like I said, it's been a year since we've been fully staffed. So it's pretty amazing. Staff training, I have a typo up there. It should be January of '22. We started a new electronic record. So that continues to be improving, changing quite frequently, but they're doing some great things with that. We're able to pull off a lot of data is kind of the main goal with that. So that continues to be improving. Immunizations, they've gone up the last few months within our office, which is a pretty cool thing. We have a lot of schools that are referring students to us to get, who don't have insurance, to come to our office to get those immunizations. And then we continue to follow up with that family until they're completely up to date. We also do yearly immunization audits, and those numbers every year continue to maybe not be as impressive. So we're going to take a little bit more initiative this year and work with the schools at the end of the year to really promote and focus on the kindergarteners, of course, the required immunizations, but also those sixth graders, which continue to get missed with the required T-DAP and Meninge-Coccal. We're currently working with Camelot right now and doing a T-DAP-Meninge-Coccal clinic in March, hopefully, March, April. We did these a few years ago. They were great for a few years, and then they just kind of tinkered down. So I'm curious to see what kind of results we get. But again, I think it's just promoting and getting awareness to the parents of those immunizations and those well-child visits, how important they can be. Some more to come on that. WIC is the main part of our program. It's a supplemental nutrition program federally funded. We continue, again, our numbers are down. They're still kind of down statewide, but we have weeks of increase. Lately, we've seen a lot more pregnant women in postpartum, new clients. So that's a good thing, too, that we have new people coming in. The fruit and vegetable waiver continues to be increased. For children, it's $24. Women, it's from $43 to $47. This was after COVID. Prior to COVID, children was $9, and women were $11. So we continue to pray that that increase stays up because I'm not sure what you could buy nowadays with the $9 or $11 for fruits and vegetables. So that's exciting as far as that goes. We're really encouraging people to come back into the office. We've seen a pretty good positive rate with this. We still have some with transportation issues or who are sick where we do phone visits. And we are actually in the process of doing virtual telehealth. The dietitians are currently piling that program that would be available. But otherwise, we want everybody to come in so we can get those height and weights, hemoglobins, and lay those physical eye on those kiddos and moms. Formula recall is still kind of an issue out there. It's getting better, improving, but we're just working with those families that the formula is not out there, if they're in the special needs formula. Regards to the mental health, we continue to see women, pregnant women for prenatal education, breastfeeding, see what other referrals in the community that we can assist them with, and continue also to focus on like the depression screening questions. We use the PHQ9 screening, which is common across the healthcare system. If they answer yes to the two hooly questions that are listed there, we have them fill out a more in-depth depression screening. And if they score a certain number on that screening, then we do a referral right to the doctor or the provider. Safe sleep is also a big thing. The state is doing some big things with this, too, that's kind of coming down the road. But again, just trying to figure out ways how we can keep those babies in safe sleep situations. We do offer pack and plays within our office, too, for those that qualify or who do not have a safe place for baby to sleep. School services, we did most of them in September. We have a few things left to finish up with. In the schools that we have contracts with are Dewbrooke, Sioux Valley, Volga Christian, and Arlington. So those should be completed, hopefully, in April. We continue to screen all children, developmental screenings with ASQ, ASQSEs. And again, if they have a referral, then we refer those to either ICAP or Bertha Three or Head Start program. Oral assessments, those fluoride varnishes, encouraging kids to go to the dentist. We refer a lot to the United Way Dental Bus that comes through Brookings. That's a great service for those who do not have insurance. Otherwise, we often refer to Sioux Falls or dismiss Dakota Horizons. And if you have a, you know, lower income, transportation is usually a barrier, too. So that dental bus is really utilized when it comes through. And then the last is just kind of our stats over the last year. I think I sent both of them so you can kind of compare kind of where numbers are at. The big thing I noticed, like I said, the last couple quarters is that the immunization numbers have gone up, and we've seen that in the office, too. So which is a good thing. Any questions?
Questions for Jen? All right. Thank you for coming.
Next time you come, Kelly, hopefully I'll be in the office. All right, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Department, Bob.
Good morning. Written report that I sent out, the important thing on there is FEMA has completed four of our projects. We've received payment for county highway equipment. We've received payment for law enforcement and the county vehicle damage. We got payment pending for the Sinai shop and the main shop, but they are asking me for more information on the Brew Shop, the East Shop, and the courthouse fence. So we've got a couple of different options we can do on that, but I guess I'm looking for some guidance on how should I respond to FEMA on this?
So you're asking to respond to their?
Before they can close things out, they don't just automatically close them out without us giving them a response.
Okay.
Rather, we do not want their assistance. And I forwarded a list out yesterday. They... There's various reasons we can decline, such as we don't want to pay the cost share and things like that. They will only pay us to put the building back in the same state that it was in. Like if we're going to build a new East Shop and we're going to double the size of it, all they're going to do is consider the price of the exact same size that was damaged. But they're willing to let... One thing that they do assist us in, if the building codes have changed since that building was built, then we can build the building up to the newest one. But for them to continue on, they're going to have to start getting quotes on what we want done so they can be reviewed by the FEMA people and the state people.
Do they pay when it's completed? Or do you pay off a quote that if we turn around and got a quote for the original building like we had done before for replacement, and they'll send us a check towards that, and we could maybe use it towards if we wanted to build something bigger?
Typically, it's, as far as I know, it's after it's completed or the construction's ongoing, one of them kind of things. You know, if you just got a plan on a building in the future, they're not going to pay towards that. It's like the courthouse fence. You know, if we're not going to do the courthouse fence right now, which is fine, all I got to do is tell them we don't want their mitigation assistance, then you can build the fence whenever you want. But if you are going to build a fence, we just need to get a quote. And that allows them to start the process. They have the quote in place, and then once the fence is up, then they'll make the payment as far as I know.
That includes the Brew Shop in there also, right?
That is correct. Brew Shop is one... What they do is they've got them broken down into three projects for us because we didn't know. Each one of them's got a variant. One may be done, one may not be done. So they got it broke down by the Brew Shop. You've got the East Shop, which was totally blown apart. And then you got the courthouse fence, which I don't know if the courthouse... I don't know what it's going to take to replace the courthouse fence.
The Brew Shop's completely gone, too. I mean, that's...
Yep.
We wanted to move forward in that. We just wanted to make it larger, I thought.
And that would be fine. I mean, what they want, what they have to do, we have to start getting like an engineer's quote on what needs to be done there at the Brew Shop. And then FEMA would take that under their own project and start processing it. And if it's... Well, FEMA's going to... And they got their own engineers, too. I mean, we have it engineered on our side, and then it goes to FEMA, and they've got their own people. And then, but they want us to look at mitigation things like putting hurricane clips on the roof and maybe tying it down to the foundation better than it was before. They're willing to pay for those upgrades. They've got no problem with that.
All right, to your question on the highway shop, replacement of that particular building, if we were to accept the funding to replace what we had with hurricane tie downs, whatever, can we accept that money after the project is done? If it takes us two to three years to get it done, will we still get reimbursed even though we may build a bigger, new shop?
I believe so, as long as you've got the paperwork documenting what you're building and everything. They said it can be a big, much bigger building, but all they're going to pay for is the size of the building that was...
They don't have a time limit.
Not as far as I know. I can check into that. Our next meeting's coming up at the end of the month.
I'd be more concerned if they have a time limit that you have to do this in one to two years, where it may take us three to four or something to complete a project. Do we lose the money at that particular point?
Brian, do you have any plans or anything for the Brew Shop in place?
I haven't moved forward with anything yet, but I did pull up what documentation we did have when that built, that structure that was there was built. Obviously, there wasn't any details laying out, you know, finite details that just kind of detailed out what we wanted to see, you know? And I think that's probably what Bob's saying is we need to look at those upgrades to prevent that structure blowing away in the future.
Yeah, FEMA won't allow you to build a building that does not meet the modern building code, so.
Read through that. Basically, we need to enlist the engineer to get a set of plans for the Brew Shop and possibly a plan in place for the shop in Brookings? To satisfy FEMA, I guess?
Yeah. And I think we want to move forward. I don't think we want to... I know the other ones are 100%, but Phil, the Sinai and the main shop and the vehicles and stuff, there was probably a little bit easier fixes than replacement of buildings. So, you know, basically, the three projects we have left are replacement. And so you're saying it's up to us to try to start that project. We want to keep going, which I think, you know, we need to get a consensus if we do, but I think we'd be throwing away good money there or FEMA money if we didn't. So probably need to start that process of getting an engineer to design the building, design it to the standards of FEMA here that they're requiring, and see what that number comes in at, submit it, and then work through that process. And we can decide later if we want to expand that building, build it a little bit bigger or something like that.
Definitely on the Brew Shop, for sure, as soon as we can.
All right. The other question I have is the cost for engineering. Putting this together is also reimbursable?
Yep, yep. Everything gets wrapped into it.
So there'd be no reason for us not to continue and move forward because we'll recover those costs.
Typically, a FEMA cost share on, you know, of course, they take insurance into consideration, and I don't know the total formulas that they use, but typically, it's 75, 25.
Well, I think we're okay to move forward on that. We need to... I'm not sure who needs to start with that engineering. I don't know, Brian, is that something you can get started with?
I'll get something going.
Okay.
And I'll contact FEMA, let them know that we're ongoing. And the fence, do we still want to go with that or?
The fence is unique because it's at the historical... There's some probably historical questions that we need to have answered because it's at the courthouse and it's an exterior fence.
And I don't think there's a problem meeting because they've got a historical person on the FEMA board. It has to meet the historical society standards, so they understand that part, too.
I can visit maybe with Mike Struck and get that to see if there's anything that we need to do there. I don't know how to get that started because of its location in the historic district.
Do we still have the designs for that fence replacement we had a long time ago? Did we get rid of those?
I have no idea. I haven't...
We had a price, and we had those as part of, had somewhere. And we decided to put the old fence... It had to do with replacing the equipment that was in behind the fence, that the fence was supposedly going to have to come down. And obviously, they figured out a way. When we asked them to pay for the fence, they said no, and they figured out a way to get the equipment in there anyway.
Because I think they wanted to do like a vinyl fence, and that's not probably going to work.
So obviously, we need to talk to these historical people and figure out what is appropriate, and then go out and get new bids. Is that appropriate to Bob?
I can start that process.
Yeah, sounds good. I know we had some quotes, and they were relatively high in the company that was replacing equipment. Didn't see it necessary to spend that money, and they figured out another way to get the equipment inside the fence.
So I'll report to FEMA that we are interested in pursuing all three of them at this time, and we'll keep them updated with our progress.
Sounds good.
Moving right along, there was a house fire in Bushnell. We contacted the American Red Cross, and they provided assistance. And we had a home booth at the home show the last, on Saturday and Sunday. Good participation. It looks like the EM messaging that we're getting out over Facebook and over the radio every now and then, I'm getting good feedback, or I got good feedback during the home show. So that's a plus. PPCC slash pod meeting scheduled at noon on Thursday. We are going to have to decide if we're going to give influenza shots this fall or not. And that decision will be made during that meeting and reported to the state of South Dakota. NACO Legislative Conference is coming up. Local Emergency Planning Committee meeting is February 16th. Drainage issues, we, of course, we had the big drainage discussion last week or last meeting. Since then, it was brought to my attention about the Big Sioux, Hamlin, or Hamlin-Big Sioux watershed district. So we're in contact with the last known director of that. I got hold of Banner's associate, the environmental woman working on that, and I got her, I gave her the contact telephone number. So I figured the best thing to do is let them two talk a little bit, and then we'll schedule another meeting and discuss it with the whole board on what... The Hamlin-Big Sioux Water District, what it is, it's a taxing district. They don't pay much on taxes, but they pay a little bit each year. And it's to maintain the Big Sioux River, starting in Hamlin County, just like it says, into Brookings County. So they've got some money in reserve. And the question is, is this project within the realm of their scope and things like that? That's what we're checking into now to see if we could possibly get it... If we do decide to proceed and like go towards an environmental impact study or something, are they willing to help cost share some of that, just like East Dakota Water Development District? So that's the situation on the drainage. Any questions?
Questions for Bob?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian? All right.
Real quick. Transportation study. I know we won't meet the March 1st deadline, but talking with some DOT officials, we may want to look at it in the future due to the fact that the original study that we did in 2011 does not include the overpass and different probably moods or trends on how the county's growing. We may want to look at that in the future. I don't know if this is anything that we need to act on right now, but for our future, we might want to look into adding that in there. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. I know that this may help us in the future attain some, some grants. In the future for expansion on two fourteenth, if that's the route we decide to go. So I wanted to bring that up. And the only other thing I got to touch on quick is the fire that we had on our roof. Uh, about five thirty AM on Sunday. I got the call about five fifty, I was on site. The roof or the fire itself was primarily contained to the roof. There was no damage on the inside aside from some smoke. And then the major brunt of the damage came from the, the water that infiltrated after uh, it seeped through the concrete struck, the structure itself, the, the part that was burning was that rubber membrane that we put down last year. I'm sure many of you guys recall that, but we do have a pretty good sized hole. Um, this morning we have the insurance adjuster on site. Um, got a man lift out there to assist us in getting up there. So I myself haven't seen it, nor has any of the crew aside from the, the two guys that were on the volunteer fire department. So I haven't looked at it yet, but uh, looked like it was started from our waste oil burner. So.
Is it, is the roof compromised?
Around a twenty by thirty area roof, uh, part of that membrane and that foam or closed cell. The styrofoam was compromised, so any uh, rain that we would get now or snow uh, is going to penetrate and get inside the shop. Uh, one of the things that we're hoping to get from the insurance adjuster this morning is a recommendation on how we should move forward to try to either one temporarily get that to where it's, you know, somewhat sealed off or uh, get a professional up there to either one completely replace the roof or to uh, temporarily patch it until, you know, the inclement or the weather is a little more conducive to that type of work.
So we'll find that out today with the insurance adjuster.
And I'll keep you guys up to date. I've been, uh, you know, making sure Kristen knows what's going on and, and if anything major comes forward, uh, I'll make sure that you guys are in the loop on what's happening.
All right. Thank you.
I just like to thank the fire department and the personnel that responded to the fire. I mean, it but it, it, it could have been a lot worse.
Yeah. No, they, uh, they were out there and did a, did a bang up job. We did do some cleanup. We're still dealing with some of the debris that was, uh, blown off the roof, um, by the water, but we're getting it to where we can function. So we're all there and functioning, no, nothing, uh, it, it could have been a lot worse.
Question, Brian, the waste oil burner, that's not working now then?
We currently don't have it functioning. Uh, we've disabled it just to make sure that, you know, the insurance uh, adjusters had time to look at it. We'll most likely end up having to have, uh, electrician out to check out some of our wiring. Because there's roughly about two thousand gallons a minute dumping down when they were spraying the roof. So a lot of our, uh, wiring is we're a little concerned about with our lights and, and that, but uh, we are going to have probably a clean burn come up and look at that before it is put back functional again, if it is put back functional again. And that's another question that I have for the insurance company is how do we move forward with that?
Any plans? I know I talked to you specifically yesterday, but obviously you can see through the concrete barriers. We've got some, some issues with continuing leakage. We we get a hold of, uh, the roofing company and do a temporary patch before we get it settled with insurance to get that fixed or do we just?
Well, it was one of the things we were gonna, you know, see what insurance would uh, help us with and if they aren't willing to do that, we still need to do something in my opinion. And uh, I just wanted to get maybe a little bit of direction from Chad on how we should move forward.
Certainly I'd like to get it sealed up.
Absolutely.
We don't have any raining yet, but we got snow and we've got snow up there that could melt. I don't want you to have to clean up water again.
Right. So yeah, that's why he, uh, did make it a point to when I did talk to him yesterday, he was planning on coming Thursday, but Thursday there's a potential for some moisture, so he agreed to come up this morning.
Great. Keep us posted.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we, number seven on the agenda, we have a nine o'clock, um, scheduled agenda item. Uh, this is a public hearing in action to approve resolution twenty-three dash zero six supplemental budget resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval?
Second.
Second. Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Uh, is there any proponents? Any proponents? Opponents, are there any opponents? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments from, uh, the commissioners? Hearing none, uh, we'll vote on the supplemental budget resolution. Please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, also under that agenda item is an action to unassigned funds in general fund. Fund balance to unassigned fund balance line one zero one dash two dash two seven seven dash zero 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 as follows. Letter A, six hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred, one dollar from one zero one dash two dash two seven six dash nine one zero zero. Letter B is two million, three hundred thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-three cents from one zero one dash two dash two seven six dash nine one zero one. And letter C is three hundred thousand from one zero one dash two dash two seven six dash nine one zero four. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion.
So when we are, what we're doing is using as part of that resolution that you just approved, moving money from the general fund that we've assigned for, um, bridge projects over the years over to um, the highway road and bridge fund to pay those bills. We've assigned it within the general fund. Now we're basically unassigning it, putting it back into that, just that general fund, fund balance, and then it'll come out of that line to be transferred over to the two oh one or highway fund.
All right, any further comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Letter two, under that agenda item is action to approve a cash transfer from the general fund to the highway road and bridge fund in the amount of three million, two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion.
And again, this moves, the resolution gives us the budget authority over in that two oh one fund. This actually moves the cash from those unassigned fund balance amounts from general fund over to the highway fund as well. So both of these items are needed. Um, one gives the budget authority, the other is the cash side.
All right, any further comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll go back to department head reports. Marty.
Morning.
Morning.
I'll be quick. Forty-eight presently in jail and nine of them are Moody County inmates and then we have a, have two or three from other counties at the present time. The twenty-four seven, uh, participants up a little bit, we have a hundred and twenty-two on twenty-four seven. We have thirty-three that come in twice a day for breath tests. We got twelve on the remote breath test, nineteen on SCRAM, eighteen on UAs, drug court, we got four, hope court, we got seven. DUI court, we have eleven. Uh, GPS, I have fifteen on GPS. And I'm still waiting for, uh, I applied for, uh, we applied for a ten thousand dollar grant for wages for twenty-four seven, so I'm hoping that we'll get approved for that. You know, right now I only have one full-time person on the twenty-four seven and that's Tanya. And then we just use a part-time correctional officer that's in the back and doing her duties and then she has to run up when Tanya's gone to, to do twenty-four seven. So I'm hoping to get that grant so I can keep someone back there a little bit permanently uh, to do the twenty. It'd be a lot better than, uh, having to run around so much. So I'm kind of looking forward to that, hopefully for that anyway. The other thing is, is that, um, I just want to get, uh, you guys' approval is that I got an eighteen-year-old, uh, high school intern. It's a non-paid. I've, you know, I've done this over the years. Had a high school intern and it's someone that's interested in law enforcement and gives them a little taste. Actually, I have, one of my full-time correction officers was an intern in twenty eighteen, I believe. So sometimes they come back. Anyway, uh, and, uh, when I had talked to our insurance company back and it's been a while, they said I should bring it to you guys to get it noted that, that, that she'll fall under our insurance. But she's also on the school insurance because it's a school function, so she's, she's covered there too, but I just assume uh, because she will go out in the car once in a while and ride with a deputy. Right now she's just helping out with office work and that type of stuff. I go over a lot of things with them, confidentiality and that type of stuff. Unless you guys have any objection to that.
Have any issues? No, I don't think so.
Okay. Other than that, the guys have been busy, um, with the fires. I asked, I called Brian and asked him if he, you know, if we need to investigate him for a new shop. I guess, I guess, I guess we figured out what it is. So other than that, I don't have anything unless you have some questions. Yeah, your question about the highway fourteen, they told me that they wanted to do it before school was out for pedestrian traffic. When they did the last study on highway fourteen through Volga, um, you know, they missed the pedestrian traffic. And so they promised me they would do it before school is out so they can record that pedestrian traffic.
All right, sounds good. Thanks Sheriff. Checkup.
Morning. Quick update from the equalization office. Fairs, uh, by law by March first. I intend to get that filed, buttoned up, sent to qualified pre-sort by tomorrow and by the end of the day tomorrow. Um, they've indicated that they need seven to ten days to process that file, sort it and get it mailed out. So we're looking probably at uh, getting those in the mail on the seventeenth, which would be a Friday or the twentieth a Monday. So it's always nice to get those out. Give the public maybe a, you know, five to ten extra days to look at those and we can uh, maybe correct some things before they become appeals. So that's all I had. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, um, finance office. We've had, we've got a letter there from Lori about the CPI for two thousand and twenty-four. Comments on that? Jenna, did you want to talk about licensing or licenses?
Yep, thank you. Uh, Jenna Bird, senior finance assistant in the finance office. Just a quick update. Um, ordinance twenty-one dash oh four establishes the requirements, fees and regulations for the issuance of the alcohol beverage license. Um, section A speaks to the availability and notices of those licenses. Um, it states that by February of each year, our office will determine the number of on-sale and off-sale liquor license available for the ensuing calendar and we'll report that to you guys. So I'm here to do that. Um, right now we have one available on-sale liquor license and we have six available off-sale liquor licenses. And that is all.
All right, thank you. Um, moving forward, how do we, uh, move forward to issuing those licenses, the procedures that we would do to that?
So right now, um, our office did notice the availability for the on-sale liquor license. And so we have to wait. I did publish those in the newspapers two times. I have to wait at least thirty days to accept any applications after the last publication date. That deadline is February eleventh. So far we have received one application for the on-sale liquor license, that available license. So I will bring that application to you, to the board, um, once that deadline has passed. As far as the off-sale liquor licenses, I don't think that we've really, we've, we've published it one time that there are available, that it is available, um, but we haven't received any applications.
Sounds good, thank you. Also for the sheriff's office there, be it noted, uh, Cyan O'Neill, unpaid sheriff's office intern listed for work comp purposes. So we need to get that into the minutes. All right, we'll get a couple of regular business items before nine fifteen here. Number eight, letter A, action to approve resolution twenty-three dash zero seven, a resolution designating the contact person for request assistance from the South Dakota wildfire, fire, wildland fire coordinator pursuant to South Dakota codified law four one dash two, two twenty A dash eleven and amending resolution twenty-two dash zero eight. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Bob, comments on this? Is this, this is going to be you, I think, aren't you? Going to be the contact person?
Yes, sir. And I work at the city of Brookings Fire Chief Pete Bojer, who's a wildland fire person.
All right, any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, action to approve resolution twenty-three dash zero eight, a resolution approving a solid waste facility for the city building demolition in the city of Aurora, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion.
This came to us, uh, late last week from the city of Aurora. Um, they were in contact with D A N R. That, that organization requires this resolution from the county for the city to set up a debris site, uh, within their city limits, but they still require this resolution from the county. So we worked with city of Aurora and their city attorney, Steve Brightman, to get this drafted, um, last week.
All right, any further comments?
Bob, did you have any issues with this?
No, sir. It's over there by their sewer plant. It's a good, good location for it.
Yeah, I, I was contacted by their city, uh, maintenance guy, Colin, and he kind of updated me on, uh, this, the big hall and the little hall and additional buildings would all be tore down. It's kind of an emergency situation. Uh, they're worried about them falling down. They're moving forward as quick as they can.
All right, any further comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, letter C, action to approve agreement twenty-three dash zero one, a Brookings County Detention Center inmate housing contract with dual county. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Comments, Sheriff? All right. Any more further comments or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we have a nine fifteen scheduled agenda item. This is the drug court presentation from Judge Howard and Drug Court Administrator Joan Neringa. Come forward, please.
Good morning. Joan's gonna hand you some handouts. Get started here. And we appreciate you guys letting us come in today. So Dan and his office had reached out to us, uh, when Brookings County was advised of the opioid settlement funds and he had suggested that their office might suggest to you all that the drug court might be an appropriate recipient of those funds. And had asked that we just come in, give you a brief update on our program, what those funds would be used for, answer any questions. I really think it's going to be a quick update. Uh, I do know there are some newer commissioners. Most of you are probably familiar with these programs, but if not, I just wanted to give you a really quick background so you kind of knew what this is all about. Uh, I'm Judge Abigail Howard. I'm a mag- I'm Judge Abigail Howard. I'm a magistrate judge here in the Third Circuit, and I also oversee the Drug and DUI Court for Brookings County. And this is Joan Neringa. She is our program coordinator. She does everything for me, but she runs this program, and then she also oversees the Beadle County Drug Court program, which I'm also the judge for. So just so you kind of have the quick background, a Drug Court or a DUI Court is considered a specialty court. They're all over the country. There's thousands across the country. In South Dakota, we have 17. There's either Drug Courts, DUI Courts, Mental Health Courts, Veterans Courts, or Family Courts. And they are a sentencing alternative. So if someone has felony-level offenses, usually often associated with drugs or alcohol, in lieu of sending them to prison, the circuit judges can sentence them to a specialty court. In Brookings, we just have the Drug Court and DUI Court. The Drug Court was started in 2016, and in 2021, we started the DUI Court. And essentially what it is, is once someone's in, it's a very intensive 18-month-long program. They have to come to court weekly. They have to meet with a probation officer. They go to mental health counseling, substance use counseling. They have to have random drug tests and alcohol tests. Eventually, they're required to get a job or take steps in furtherance of their education. They have to maintain safe and stable housing. They have to go to peer support meetings, like things like A A and a smart recovery, things like that. And they have to start learning how to contribute back to the community. So they do things like community service activities, volunteer hours, things of that nature. So it's a very intensive program. It's a national program. And in South Dakota, it's really kind of getting off the ground, and in Brookings, we're really kind of finally getting our stride, being in our seventh year of the program. These programs are funded primarily through the legislature. So Joan's salary is through the legislature. Mine is, obviously, we're state employees. All of the drug tests, things like that, those are funded through the legislature. The treatment is funded through the legislature. We have a defense attorney on the team funded through the legislature. A member of the state's attorney's office serves on the team. Someone from the police department, someone from the sheriff's office. I think that might be it. And so the team meets once a week. We staff all of our clients, and then we have a court session every week. It's on Thursdays at 10. It's open to the public. You're always welcome to come in. We'd welcome you. Love to see you there. And that's where we do our check-ins with our folks each week. The costs that are not covered from the legislature are really ancillary costs, and those are things I'll really kind of touch on at the end, but that's where we would anticipate these funds would go towards. So we have things called sanctions and incentives. Sanctions are to discourage or redirect bad behavior. That can be a variety of things that we utilize. And then we give incent, incentives to motivate good behavior. And incentives is one of these ancillary costs that we cover. So it's things like gift cards, home goods, just a variety of things, things from restaurants in town, anything like that. We also use the funds to help for transportation costs, so we get beta tokens often. You have to remember that most of these folks are without a vehicle. Some of them are without a home. Most of them have little to no belongings coming into the program. They might be starting from scratch. So sometimes it's for toiletry items. There was one individual that was homeless coming into our program, and literally, there was one point where Joan and I just pulled out cash to be able to pay for one month's rent for her. So ideally, these funds reimburse us for things like that that happen. We have survived so far from the generosity of people in this community. We've just had donors that have been very committed to our cause and our program, individual donors that have donated gift cards, donated just checks, funds. We've had churches that have donated. So we're very grateful, very appreciative of that support, but kind of just always looking at if there's any other avenue that would have some stability there. All programs like this, these specialty courts, have these ancillary funds or accounts with the same type of cost. They have the same exact thing. And they just do similar methods. Get private donations, apply for grants, things like that. So just kind of look for appropriate arenas where those funds could possibly come from. Typically, in our program, we range from 15 to 18 participants on average. We can only max 20 participants with one probation officer, and that's all we've been assigned so far. So that's the max that we would really serve at any given time, and we're pretty close to that range. I would say since we've started the DUI Court, it's exploded. I mean, every month, I have two or three more felony DUI offenders that are just constantly in the queue applying to come in. So the Drug Court's been pretty stable, and we've really seen the DUI Court. That was a need for this community that really, it's, we've met it. And that was my goal originally for this program. When we started, it was just the Drug Court, but we kind of knew eventually we'd like to have that track as well. So we've really seen some success with that. So what I've asked Joan to do today is just kind of put some brief stats together for you so you can kind of see us compared Brookings to statewide, what the goals should be, are we meeting them, just so you can kind of see the success of our program, and that the money is well-used here. We are serving the most high-risk, high-need folks in addiction in this community, and by and large, we are helping them, and we are giving a benefit back to this community. Because if they're in our program and they succeed in overcoming their addiction, then they are a taxpayer again. They're renting a property or owning a property. They have a job in this community. They're shopping in this community. They have children that are going to school in this community. If they go to prison, they have none of that. Or if they're in the revolving door of addiction, then they're just coming back into the court system. That's more court-appointed attorneys' fees, more costs and issues for the jail to have to deal with, just a constant revolving door. So we think there's a benefit, but I wanted Joan to just address some of the stats and then answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Good morning. The first two pages of what I've presented you are from our latest statewide quarterly report. Every quarter, a report comes out up here, chooses different.
Speak up to the microphone there, please. Sorry, they're being recorded, so just want to make sure everybody can hear.
Thank you. So every quarter, a report comes out appear that highlights different data points. We track a voluminous amount of different types of data on our participants. This quarter just happens to focus on gender. So there are some statistics there, but what I really want to draw your attention to on the first page is the upper left-hand box, which are the retention and graduation rates, which are 62% for retention, which means are you hanging on to people long enough for the program to actually have an effect? And then our graduation rate, which is, of course, the people that are successfully completing. Retention is 62%. Statewide, graduation is 55%. The bottom right-hand corner shows you the Drug Court LSIR score average, which that is an assessment tool that we use to assess whether somebody is what we call high-risk, high-need. By high-risk, high-need, we mean that's an individual who has no tools to address their addiction on their own and has a high propensity for coming back into the system and reoffending. So we're looking for those people that are the most of the most. The LSIR score 35. IDA is for our DUI offenders, and that is 58. The second page, starting with those scores, our LSIR score is 36, and our IDA is 61. So our Brookings County participants are actually running with higher scores, meaning higher risk and higher need than what our state average is. The retention and graduation rates for Brookings County are some of the best in the state. Our retention rate is 69%, and our graduation rate is 61%. Just a couple of, I think, interesting data points for our graduates. Our youngest has been 21. Our oldest was 61, and our median age for our graduates is 36. And the average days of our participant is 649 that they spend in the program. Our shortest amount of time spent for a graduate was 492, which actually was our very first graduate, which I thought was interesting. The longest amount of time that a participant has spent in the program was 1,094 days, one day shy of three years.
Sometimes it takes a little extra time, right?
Every, although the program is a minimum of participation days, everyone proceeds through at their own pace. So everyone's journey is a little bit different. On the third page, you have our overall numbers for our program. How many people totally have been in the system currently graduated and terminated? That gives you a good look at our retention and graduation rates. We are keeping them long enough for treatment to take effect. We've had two people that were terminated in the program within the first six months, nine people within the first year or so. The longer we are able to hang on to people, the higher the success rate goes. And of, of those graduates, a tremendous amount of them have spent more time than 12 months in the program, which that is just reflective of the overall viability of the program, that we are giving people a chance to actually change their lives. So two-thirds of our graduates were in the program over 19 months. There are some significant cost savings of the program, and I'm not going to go over every data point, but the time that it takes a participant in the program, if they were actually incarcerated for that time, it's going to cost the taxpayers over $21,000 more per individual. So when you take that by our 31 graduates, that reflects a cost savings of over $661,000, which is huge. Our 31 graduates here in Brookings County retired over $46,000 in UJS debt during their time in the program. 80% of our graduates have not re-entered the system, which is really what our goal is, is to break the cycle of them constantly coming back into the court system because of their addiction. There are a lot of other points there that I'm not going to go into, but truly, although I wish that I could somehow put a number to it, the effect of the program on a community is immeasurable. It truly has a ripple effect because those, those individuals that are coming into us who are homeless, have nothing, are doing nothing but incurring more costs in the system, actually are turning their lives around, becoming productive members of the community, and the ripple effect in the community is immeasurable.
Any questions just on those stats or anything?
Yeah, I have a quick one here. And I'm not who best to ask this, but rejected. We have admission and rejection. What are the basis of a person maybe not coming into the Drug Court or the DUI Court?
Yeah, so they have to be what Joan referenced as the high-risk, high-need. And so one of the primary, the first thing we look at is on those assessments, there's a probation assessment, that LSI or the IDA, they have to score high enough, meaning they are, I don't want to say the worst of the worst, but they are someone that will not succeed on regular probation, that they are struggling the most in life, they're most likely to reoffend, that they have significant treatment needs. They have to be high-risk, high-need. So if they aren't, at this point in time, we don't accept anybody that's not high-risk, high-need because they don't need the intensity of this program. We don't accept sex offenders. That's through state rule. We can't. And we can't accept anybody that's on parole. They can't have dual supervision from parole and probation services. That's also a state rule. And we don't accept anyone under 18. Some areas have juvenile courts like this. We just don't right now. So those are the main parameters. Those would be the reasons why we deny.
And if somebody is in the program and then does not finish or fails the program, I don't know what you call it, what happens? Is that something where it goes right to the pen?
Every single person we've had terminated does get sent to the penitentiary or has been sent to the penitentiary. And the reason is, I mean, we really want there to be, we want there to be a strong incentive to try to finish it out, even if they're struggling with it. And our circuit judges here feel strongly that this is the most intensive probationary program we have to keep them in the community. So if they're not successful at that, it's unlikely that we'd have any other sort of probationary program. So likely, at that point, the penitentiary is the only option. So it's always unfortunate when that happens. You know, that's never the outcome we want. I just always tell folks, if there is a termination, it just might not be the right point in time for them to, to be in a program like this.
Judge, I have a follow-up question to that. I, I kind of already know the answer to it, but I think it might be useful for the commission to understand, this is a sentencing alternative program. The level of felonies that we're dealing with, if they weren't going through your program, how many years could they be spending in prison as an alternative instead of, you know, the two or three years in your program? How many more years would they be spending in prison if they were given the maximum sentence?
Yeah. So, I mean, it depends on the offense. Typically, for the drug-related offenders, it's probably going to be a class-five felony, so they might have a possibility up to five years in the South Dakota State Penitentiary. There have been, we've seen other offenses, though. We've seen intentional damage to property, burglaries, things like that, where it was a drug-motivated offense. So it ranges. I mean, these are not your extreme violent offenders that would be facing 25, 50 years or life. Those are never people that are appropriate for this program. I would say they're on the lower end of these penitentiary sentences. The DUI offenders actually probably face more years because once you're getting up into these felony DUIs of fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth DUI, you could be facing considerable amounts, possibly 10 years in prison. So I would say there is definitely incentive to going through this process, and even if, at the beginning, they may just want to do this in lieu of going to prison, which we accept, but the hope is we're keeping them long enough, giving them the chance to get into some treatment that then they say, yeah, I actually do want to make some changes here, and then there's a real incentive to not fail or get terminated and go to prison. And I guess for me selfishly, the reason I think this program is so neat and works so well is that it's not just, it's not just going to a residential treatment facility for 30 days and then coming back and winging it on your own. And it's not just living your life with some therapy here and there and trying to wing it on your own. It's combining, this is how I have to live my life. I have to hold down a job. I have to be responsible for my family and my housing, pay my bills, and I'm getting intensive treatment at the same time. So it's, it's reality, and that's what we're trying to teach them. So, you know, not every case is a success story, but a lot of them are, and we just keep working at it. And if we can help one person, that's our goal, but it's a lot of work, so.
Just a quick question on the, the one that stands out is 31 graduates represent parents of 40 minor children. Minors, obviously, are under the age of 18.
Yep.
What's the mix there? I mean, are, are we seeing more under 12 or more between 12 and 17? Or do you have any sense of the breakdown? Are those minor children or the 31 participants?
Yeah, I would say more between the 12 to 17 demographic. We've had a few, I would say, you know, less than 10 participants that have had children under the age of 10. I think I've had, let's see what number I came up with here. I think it's like seven babies born to drug-free mothers as a result of going through this program. So for me, that's a big win, a baby coming into this world that is not having, as a drug-free mama, and came into the world in a healthy way. But then also, what we're talking about, children that are school age, that now we can help them, whether it's there's parenting classes in this community that are free, we can set them up with. If it is kind of doing some parent and child counseling, we offer that. If the child's struggling with things, it's getting involved with the school if we need to. We often see kids that are struggling or having issues as a result of living in this chaos with their family. So they're not officially in the program, but we kind of adopt them into the program to the extent we can.
Well, they're kind of in the program, whether they want it to be or not. So the question I have is, the legislature provides funding if we have that child between 12 and 17 that you're talking about. Seems to be the most vulnerable to influences of their parents at that particular point. The others are just a victim of it. But these kids, if they need counseling, is the legislature providing that counseling through either behavioral health here at town or locally? Or is, are there avenues through this program to, to, to take these kids, other than just parenting counseling?
Right.
Individual counseling. You've got it through the schools to a certain degree, and I understand that. But are there funds available to take it additionally farther, if necessary, for some of these kids?
And, and I don't feel prepared to give you a good answer on that because really, truly, when it comes to dealing with children of addiction, that is outside the scope of what we do. You know, we are more holistic in terms of our participant, and so when those children get any kind of counseling, it's perhaps when the parent in our program and the child have a moment of conflict is when they receive the funding. So I'm sorry, I really don't know the answer.
So I think the, for us, for this program, a parent and a child combined counseling is covered, but we'd have to check on that. I don't think just individual child counseling is covered through the budget of these specialty courts. courts. And then I would just add, the treatment program that we work with is Lutheran Social Services, so we have to have providers that do evidence-based counseling as well, because you had just mentioned another agency, and I just want to let you know, that's the agency we work with because they have to be trained in evidence-based modalities treatment programs, and they're the only ones in town that offer that. Any other questions?
Folks, as a little bit of background, the issue, or I guess the topic is some opioid settlement funds. Most of you are aware, there was a class action lawsuit where the plaintiff was a class of entities, including Brookings County, we were a member of the plaintiff class, along with a number of other counties, local governments all throughout the state. And as a result of that class action lawsuit, there was a settlement that was approved by the court. The share that we have at this point for Brookings County, this is the county share, is $2,965. And so the, I guess the goal or the objective is to have that allocated from the county to the drug court for the programming purposes as been outlined today.
Okay. Well, we don't have it on our agenda, but we will. But I think we can also get your guys' thoughts, if you think it's something that's a good idea or move forward with, okay with that. I mean, again, we gotta, we'll have to vote on it eventually, but right now, it's not on our agenda, but I think we're all pretty in favor of it here too, so.
And I should add too, I mean, I don't know if there's going to be another dispersment, if this is the only dispersment, there's more that needs to be decided on that.
Maybe we could pass some sort of resolution that this particular, or any funding that comes through that program be allocated back, just as a ballpark, rather than each time having to redo this for a specific amount. Maybe a resolution could be that any funds come back, do the lawsuit, would be allocated to.
Put that on an agenda also for discussion too, down the road. So, okay, any more questions or comments? Well, thank you for coming, Judge and Joan, thank you very much, we appreciate it, and that's great information, and you're doing a fantastic job for the community, so thank you very much.
I just want to make a quick plug, I want to thank your county employees that help us on the team, Ben and Austin from the State's Attorney's Office, and Marty usually has one of the deputies from the Sheriff's Office, Marcy Gabers, or Dave has helped. The reason it works so well in Brookings is because of the team we have, and I'm so appreciative of the county being willing to have those folks serve on the team. Believe it or not, there are communities where they just say, we're unwilling to send someone. And so it's because of the dynamic of this team, this group of people that care, and we're grateful for the support we've had and all the efforts to jail. It's a ton of extra support we get from the jail, they help us daily. So, big thank you to the county staff that helped with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is letter D, under Regular Business, action to approve agreement 23-02, a Brookings County Detention Center inmate housing contract with Kingsbury County. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, letter E, action to approve agreement 23-03, a Brookings County Detention Center inmate housing contract with the Flanders-Santisu Tribe. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Discussion or comments?
Just a part of the discussion is that the deputy US attorney has been working with, I've been working with him for the last two years actually, for a contract, and there's not going to be a lot coming from the tribe, probably maybe five, four or five inmates from the tribe and so forth. Otherwise, right now, they're going to Pipestone, Minnesota. Pipestone closed their jail for six months because they couldn't find employees, so they had to restart, hire all new, finally got staff, they just reopened their jail. And so the tribe wasn't able to go there. And then Mitchell, they were going to Mitchell, but Mitchell was always full, so then they're going to Roberts County. So they're pretty excited to come to Brookings County. And again, I'm still running the jail like a motel, so I don't know, I may have two out of county this week and six next week. But also, I just found out yesterday that Lacy Nguyenfeldt is, just got appointed as the chief tribal judge, and I met her this summer campaigning. Her husband is a sergeant on the Flanders Police Department, so I feel like got an in already. So what's good is we haven't negotiated bonding. Lieutenant Beitler's staff with Kingsbury County and Dua County and Moody County, you know, everybody's got a different bonding system, but they agreed that they would follow our bonding system because we're taking on this business, we don't want to have four or five or 10 bonding forms. So if they're going to bring inmates, we're going to have one bonding. Now, I don't know, we're still working with the tribe on their bonding and so forth. One thing about the tribe, if they have a mental, excuse me, a metal, medical, unless it's an emergency and we have to transport to the Brookings Hospital, they'll come and get the inmate and then take him to tribal medical staff, they'll come and get him. So we don't have to worry about that. In my contract, I have that if we have to go to a medical facility, it's $50 an hour to transport and that type of stuff. They're all willing to do that, so, if you have any questions. But I think we'll be, we'll be fine with this contract.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Sheriff. Please call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F, action to approve agreement 23-04, memorandum of understanding between the City of Volga, South Dakota and Brookings County, South Dakota regarding Samara Avenue. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
For the group, I'm planning on abstaining from this discussion. I'm currently a member of the Volga City Council. This was voted on last night, and it was unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thanks for that.
So this MOU, it piggybacks on one that we had previously had an agreement with the City of Volga. This is for the Samara Avenue project, and we're currently working with Banner Associates on getting, moving that project forward. The original MOU with the city was for phase one costs only. We've gone beyond phase one of that project, and we're kind of moving into phase two, and so reached out to the City of Volga, and they, you know, are agreeing to a 50/50 cost share for that entire contract with Banner. So phase two is almost $100,000, phase three is about almost $130,000, and there's some reimbursable costs. So then, as those costs come in, what we'll do is bill the City of Volga, and they'll reimburse us back for 50% of those costs.
Discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter G, action to approve agreement 23-05, amendment number one to the agreement of number 19-39, a State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grand Agreement for Preservation/Local Administration. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, comments, discussion, Brian?
This is amendment to adjust the date for the work to be done on the Bruce Bridge Preservation Work that began last year. The work was not completed, so this amendment makes the new completion, final completion date of, you know, us receiving any of those funds back would be March 8, 2024. And the work, I did get confirmation back, the work is planned to be, began in the spring, so we should have everything wrapped up by this date.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Any other comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter H, action to approve agreement 23-06, an application for occupancy of right-of-way in the county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Laketon Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
This is a new house service.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter I, action to approve agreement 23-07, an application for occupancy of right-of-way for county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Oslo Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
This will be new underground to service the house. They're doing, they're going to be doing quite extensive work down around that Sinai area. It started last year after the Dorico, there'll be a new line, and all the services along there are going to be underground to serve those residences along County Road 12.
All right. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter J, action to approve agreement 23-08, an application of occupancy of right-of-way for county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Sterling Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
This will be a three-phase conversion to feed a irrigator, and this work will be began in the spring, obviously.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter K, action to approve advertising for professional services for two-year bridge inspection services through request for qualifications. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Second. Okay. Discussion, comments?
Wanted to update you guys here a little bit. The federal highway is pushed now, we have rented approximately 190 bridges within Brookings County, and currently, right now, we do all of our biannual inspections in one year. What we're looking to do, and it's kind of a push from federal highway, I'd like to show you guys a consultant selection form there, I don't know if we can zoom in on that, but there's, I don't, I don't have this, but I got the page right here. I didn't get this until last week.
Sean, can you turn the podium cam on?
So as you guys can see here, I'm sure Larry, you can attest to this, I know when I started with being a highway superintendent 10 years ago, the extensive list that we had for bridge inspection consultants was, was well over two pages. We're only looking at 17 consultants that are qualified to do the bridge inspections. So the federal highway administration's push is, is to, especially for us counties that have these large number of structures, we're one of the counties in South Dakota that have the most numbers of structures, is to kind of split those up. I'm not saying what we're doing right now is, is wrong, but that is the push from federal highway is to split those up. I have another sheet here, and I just got this last week, so I do apologize, but federal highway is willing, as we did all of our bridge inspections last year, they are willing to, in an effort to push this, pay for that additional inspection cycle because we'd have to do one here in 2023, half, and then the following half next year in 2024 to get us on that annual cycle. But they are willing to foot that 80%, and the Brookings County would be having to be responsible for 20%. Instead of having it done every two years, we'd be on an annual cycle, and we could ease more, a little more easily budget what we have to do then, because part of the request here, as you guys can see, is we do have 190 bridges, we'd be looking at splitting basically east and west of the interstate. 94 bridges one year and 96 in the following year.
So traditionally, before the rates that the engineering firms would bill you at were at a state rate?
Correct.
Now they'll do each county individually.
Right.
So potentially, our costs could go down?
So I guess what I'm asking for is, I know that we've, we've done some RFPs and RFQs, what I'm asking for is to allow for advertisement, and moving forward on this, you know, we do have some local firms here within Brookings, and, you know, obviously, the list is getting smaller, but I know that there's shown interest in from other firms, and I just feel moving forward that we give everybody a fair crack at it and move on from there.
All right, sounds good. Thanks, Brian. All right, any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, letter L, action to approve advertising for a security electronics consultant for the courthouse through a request for proposals. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
So as you know, we got a courthouse security grant through UJS to do some security upgrades over at the courthouse. Due to the price point of that project, we'd like to get permission to put this request for proposals out for the security electronics consultant to do, to do that work over there. So that's what this is for.
All right. Comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter M, action to approve abatement, number 23-02, an abatement for application made by Access Holdings LLC for parcel number 21276-10949-062-00 in the amount of $1,159.55. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Okay, discussion, comments?
Yeah, this one's a two-part abatement. There were some acres that were acquired for the 20th Street South interchange project, and then in addition to that, there was a church structure on this property that was removed in September of '22. So the total abatement is a combination of those two things.
All right. Comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter N, action to approve abatement, 23-03, an abatement application made due to qualifying for the disabled veteran property tax exemption. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Yeah, the reason this is handled by abatement is because the VA paperwork came in in 2022, and there was a retroactive date of award for this recipient in 2021, so had the taxpayer had that paperwork in their possession, they would have applied for the tax exemption a year ago. The abatement amount is for $150,000 of property value to be exempt.
Further discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Jacob. Letter O, action to approve late elderly and disabled tax-free applications. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
There are three applications that were received, meet, these do meet the qualifications, however, they were turned in late, so because of that, they come to the commission for approval, but they are being recommended for approval.
All right. Comments or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, letter P, action to approve the 2023 weed department chemical bids on all items listed. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Misty is asking that all of these bids be approved for the 2023 season due to availability. She wanted to make sure that all bids were, were approved.
So they're approved, accepted, that we will do that, but she will purchase from the lowest bid until there's none available, and then go to the next? Okay. Questions on that? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Pose same sign, motion carries. Letter Q, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a full-time male correctional officer in the sheriff's office, is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
This was due to a promotion, uh, within the department from the full-time correctional officer position to a deputy sheriff position.
All right, any comments, questions? Very none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Letter R, action to approve request for vacancy for a full-time deputy in the sheriff's office, is there a motion to approve?
So approval.
Second.
Discussion.
This one, this, uh, position is available, uh, due to a resignation with one of our full-time deputy sheriffs, uh, moving out back home, basically, moving out of state.
Yeah, this, I hate to, this is Anna Sells, my female deputy. I hate to see her go, because she's, she's really come along and so forth, but, uh, um, her boyfriend, she's in love. Anyway, and, uh, she originally went to school to be game fish in parks, and a, uh, opportunity arose for her in Roberts County, and she got that position. So I hate to see her go, I have a tough time getting good female applicants, and I hate to see her go, but I wish her well also.
All right, any more comments? Discussion. Very none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, on to number nine, commission department director's report.
Included with my report was this spread. This, I think, kind of gives a clearer picture on where we are at with our commission projects budget. Started out with about six point eight million, you can see, um, last year, and then one thing already approved for twenty-twenty-three, all of the different projects and the amount. We do have about, just shy of two point three left to allocate. Then as we move over to the right, you can see when we've, we've made those payments in twenty-twenty-two and here in twenty-twenty-three, and what's left to pay out, specifically, the fire departments have been, you know, at getting, you know, partial payments along the way, so wanted to show you where we are with that. So just to, just more for your information at this time, but, um, wanted to show you how I was track, uh, was tracking that. Midary Township, if you recall, a couple of meetings ago, that we did, um, tentatively approve their rural access infrastructure application for their culvert projects. They're actually wanting to do seventeen culvert projects. The total, I think, that we had gotten from them originally was like about a hundred and thirty thousand, the estimate that, and if you recall, it was just, like the township supervisor, I think, had provided that estimate, there were no hard and fast quotes, so, um, now Ostrom, or they, they've received their, um, actual quotes for, for the individual projects, so closer to one hundred and seventy-seven thousand. If we're still comfortable, I think we had based that approval on them getting the quotes in, so. And if we're comfortable, we can continue to move forward there. The chamber had, um, again, we've always get a chamber sponsorship for the county, um, we've been at that sustainer level, which has been nine hundred dollars in the past. They've changed, um, some of their, their different levels of participation now, um, trying to find that page of where it spells it all out. Here we go. So as you can see, the sustainer level now is fifteen hundred dollars. The next lower level is, is a partner level at seven hundred dollars. Um, just kind of looking for direction from the board on, you know, where, how you would like, um, to proceed with this. So like I said, we've, we've always paid the nine hundred dollar level, but that, that, um, that, those levels have changed, amounts have gone up. You can kind of see down there what-
I would encourage that we probably maintain that sustainer level simply because we have participated in a lot of the chamber events, more so than maybe some other public entities, so I think our participation is appreciated, and I think we, we take advantage of it, and we should.
Because this does affect, like, once we get our membership from the chamber, all county employees then are now chamber members, and get that chamber membership, um, benefit if they were to attend any of the chamber events. It's not just, not just commissioners, so it's all staff, so. So sustainer? Do I see heads shaking? Okay, all right. Received this information from the city of Brookings last week, they're going to be having a public open house on their twenty-twenty-three construction projects here in the city. It's actually gonna be held, held right here in the chambers on February twenty-third, starting at five o'clock.
Can I add one thing with that, Stacy?
Yes.
We are going to be working with the city and adding in our projects that are within the vicinity of Brookings. Um, I know that we're gonna be starting that bridge project down, uh, north of the golf course, and it is agreed to that they are going to keep that timeline construction when that happens, so it's in one area, so everybody can look in one spot to figure out what's going on, what we're looking at for opening dates, or what phase we're at in that construction. So I just wanted to tell you guys that.
So yes, again, that's here in this room, five o'clock on the twenty-third of February, if you're interested in attending that. We did receive, uh, a letter from Jamie Grabett, the, uh, juvenile detention center, JDC director down in Minnehaha County. Um, I know we were, have been, had, had correspondence with them about kind of that funding formula for JDC, and what that might look like towards the end of last year. As the legislature has, has gone through, is going through their process, Minnehaha County is, has decided that they're not going to anticipate any funding for that project through, um, the legislature, any appropriation. So they're moving forward with a vote on bonding, and I believe that was supposed to happen at their meeting today. If that is approved, we can look for them to be coming, um, to us making a presentation and discussing partner, partnership funding again. As part of that, too, we did receive their November, um, monthly commission report, so that is, was also included with my report. Um, a couple of things that, uh, came in after my report was wrapped up, um, there was some talk about the, having a work session, um, kind of discussing that work plan that I create, I think it would be good to sit down in maybe a work session type format to go through, um, that information and get that up, updated, um, now that we have the, the new commissioners here on board, um, so that work plan, maybe looking at our strategic plan. There's a couple policies, I think, that we could review as, uh, as well in the personnel manual, that maybe needs some, some language updates, uh, so. Wondering, A, if there's interest from this board on holding a session like that, and, uh, B, what would your availability be? Kind of a timeframe on when you would be wanting to do that. And I could send out, I mean, if you want me to, if you, if there's interest, I could send out a doodle poll and try to get something, maybe, you know, end of, end of February or March, can send out some dates, if, if you want me to.
Yeah, I think that's probably best.
Okay. Also this morning, I handed out the, uh, South Dakota Association of County Commissioners agenda for the spring workshop. It's April, looking out a little ways here, April nineteenth and twentieth, that's out at Pier at the Ramkota. I do have rooms already fa, uh, reserved for us for both Tuesday night and Wednesday night. As you can see, it starts at eight-thirty on, on Wednesday morning and wraps up about three o'clock on Thursday, the twentieth. Registration is going to be due here shortly. I don't know if you know, if you happen to know now that you plan to attend, you can, can give me the nod, or, um, thanks. Um, or if you don't know yet, we have a little bit of time here for registration, but I know Kelly, Mike, Sean, Ryan, Larry, all of you? Okay, perfect. And then just some upcoming dates that we have, um, next week, Monday and Tuesday, um, there's availability for kind of a pre-open house tour of the new United Way facility for, um, for just some of our local officials. There's one on Monday, the thirteenth, from about eleven to noon, and one on the fourteenth, from four to five. If you want to attend one of those sessions, you don't need to let me know, you can just, um, attend. But I wanted to make sure that you were aware of those, otherwise there will be kind of a grand opening, open house coming up, um, in the future as well for you to attend, but these were just, you know, wanted to give an opportunity for, um, some of our local officials to tour those, if, if you so desire to go before the, before the official grand opening. Um, Monday, the twentieth, is a holiday and offices will be closed. The twenty-third, again, that's that, um, open house on the twenty-twenty-three construction projects here in this room at, starting at five. The township meeting, uh, March second, starts at ten AM. The township meeting itself is in the morning, and then, um, the weed, the annual weed board meeting is at one o'clock in the afternoon, so those agendas, I'm, uh, I know they're, um, being worked on and will be sent out here before that meeting coming up on March second. And then I think that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions? All right, state's attorneys report.
Good morning, I don't really have a lot to add, we are monitoring the bills that we're following on the county and, uh, the criminal law aspect of it. Uh, we'll see how those go, um, and we'll have more to report, I guess, later on.
We'll move on to commissioner reports. Mr. VanderWaal.
Eighteenth, attended Brookings Day in Pier, and well-attended. Uh, January twenty-sixth, I attended the weed meeting here in Brookings. And February two, uh, I attended the joint powers meeting that morning, and as Jen Burns mentioned, I stopped at, tried to stop at the community health office a few times, and I'm gonna call her to get an appointment set up. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bartley.
I went to the Brookings Day in Pier. Issues, but, uh, our, our four commissioners stayed for the entire event, including the reception, and, uh, there were some great conversations with some people, because there weren't a lot of people there, so we were able to talk to people that didn't have to leave. So it was a good meeting, good time. On the twenty-third, uh, I attended, my first meeting is a board member for behavioral health. Uh, they did select a architect for their, uh, project, their building project, it happened to be ID eight. Uh, that's Angie's firm, I believe, is ID eight. So we'll be following that up, I was appointed to their building committee, so I guess we'll go from the jail to behavioral health building, uh, construction, so. As the owner's representative, February, it was six, uh, I did yesterday visit the, the highway building, an onsite inspection with Brian to, to look at what was going on, had a, a conversation, so. Uh, that's it, um, I, I do have to mention that we have a legislative forum for both District Seven and Eight, so all six legislators will be here, uh, as it was confirmed, and I get to be the moderator. They're scraping the bottom of the barrel, I'm the moderator again for that session, we'll see how that goes, so that begins at nine o'clock in the chambers here, runs for approximately an hour. Uh, please show up and, and, and submit some questions, and that's my report.
All right.
The eighteenth, also attended Brookings Day. It was like Mike said, as well-attended, it was cut short, and we did have an opportunity to talk to some of our representatives out there. On the nineteenth, we had a E-nine-one-one meeting, uh, getting back into, uh, the nine-one-one, uh, issues, and, uh, Commissioner Krogman. On the thirtieth, um, we had an intergovernmental meeting, um, one note to all the county commission, uh, President Dunn, uh, thanked us for supporting Brookings Day at the legislature and being in attendance, and also supporting the recognition of the Jack Rabbit football team out there, that was pretty awesome. Uh, also at the meeting, uh, Clint Willard thanked us for, uh, our, our donation to the Plains Academy, and also Heidi Gulickson, she, uh, incited about the new building, also thanked the commission. Uh, on one-thirty-one, uh, attended the BCOAC advisory board meeting, uh, got, uh, new commissioner and new board in place, uh, Sean was there, uh, we had a good meeting, uh, discussed some space needs, and, uh, Justin gave us a, Dustin gave us a good, uh, update on all the programs that are moving forward, and some interns, and everything sounds like it's, uh, growing out there. On, uh, yesterday, conservation board meeting, um, huge thank you to the commission for, uh, the new purchase of the pickup. Um, they're looking forward to the tour again this summer, and they're also ramping up hiring employees, uh, getting equipment ready, and, uh, ordering trees, and, uh, everything that goes along with the conservation district. That's all I have.
All right. Mr.-
On, uh, the thirty-first of January, attended the BCO advisory co, meeting, uh, they have some good things in the pla, in the plan, and, uh, and some things, uh, to look forward to. On the second of February, uh, attended the joint powers board meeting, uh, here at the county, and, uh, talked about, uh, really discussed, uh, a lot of things going on with the air handlers and things like that, but one thing we wanted to visit about is the parking on the north side of the building, uh, I know it's been an issue, and that was something that they brought up about, uh, the manner and use parking, um, and just as a public notice, I think, uh, if law enforcement sees any illegal activity out there, there, um, got to go ahead to write tickets. So, uh, if you're going east, you can park in front of the building, if you're going west, do not turn in front and park on the south side of the road, or you could get a ticket. Uh, again, on the second, uh, public affairs meeting, uh, with the chamber, uh, they discussed the, the information and legislature that's going on in Pier. That's my report.
All right. Thank you.
Here, uh, the eighteenth, at, uh, STS was a, a good event and well-attended. Uh, the nineteenth, had the E-nine-one-one meeting with Commissioner Jensen, uh, had good discussions there, um, moving forward. Uh, and then on the twentieth, I had a, um, highway budget discussion, uh, with Stacy and Brian, and then on the twenty-fifth, I had a beta meeting, um, moving forward there, I had some executive session, we're still making a decision on, uh, taking the interim tag off of our executive director, um, and moving forward there, so, um, we're discussing some options there, moving forward, but it's been a while, so we gotta make a decision, basically, is what we gotta do, so. Um, and then on the twenty-sixth, I met with a local landowner who lives in the joint jurisdiction, um, concerned about, uh, possibility of building residential in the joint jurisdiction, so had a good discussion with them. And then on the thirtieth, had the Brookings Health meeting there, and nothing, uh, major to discuss there, seems to be, everything's going smoothly. So, uh, that's about it, that's what I have, so. Next on the agenda is executive session, court twenty-five dash two and one, personnel, um, is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Very none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, we'll take about a ten-minute break here.